It is said that a person is empowered to really speak the truth when they have nothing more that they can give. But they have plenty that they want to say out loud. At the time of retirement and uh superannuation is when we ask the tough questions from the judges that what is it? That you wanted done, that what is it that you think could have been just that little more of a push? That could have been uh given to bring the system to what your version of or your what your ideal is. We are today speaking to Justice Sajad Rastogi, who has very recently superannuated after forty years. In the legal field as twenty years in the judiciary. So, thank you very much for speaking to India today. And my questions to you would be exactly that. You've been in this field for such a long time, you've seen numerous changes in the legal fraternity, in the way the judiciary works. In the way the system really tackles things and the things that are tackled. But what more do you wish you were uh what more changes do you wish had happened or are happening? That you are looking most forward.
You see, changes are always welcome. But today the judiciary is facing challenges. First is the dependency of cases. I think as the last data is available somewhere in May twenty two. Four point five or four point six crore case spending. And eighty seven percent of dependencies in the district courts. Twelve percent somewhere in the high court and the balance is being got. You have to strengthen the subordinate, the district courts in the first instance. And this challenge, to my understanding, I have seen where I came in profession, there was a tendency. I became a judge, there was a tendency. I have demitted office, there is a tendency. So in forty years, no change has come forward but still. It's a time when we must think that how this long tendency can be taken care of. And particularly in the district courts. Because I find that whenever there is this, you may say, symposium, some conferences.
Analysis.
Analysis. The focus point always remain high court, the supreme court. There are hardly people who approaches with these courts. The common man and common litigant approach only to the district courts. And that's why eighty seven plus percent is the tendency. So some guidelines, some format, some standard has to be framed. To give them guidance that how the dependency of the subordinate courts or district courts can be brought down. These are the basic challenges. Second, filling of vacancy in the high court and the district courts, that is again, one uh to my understanding. With the great efforts, you are not being able to make appointments. Although we always say that district court appointments are not made. Here we are at fault. Nowadays, after the amendments have been made and after the interference by this court. In district courts, appointments are made by the high courts.
Jee.
Not by state commissions or otherwise. So to who we should blame? We have to blame to ourselves. But what is wrong going on, God knows. But in this, in district courts, appointments are still not being made.
Actually, that would have been, that brings me very neatly to my next set of questions. Judicial appointments, the judicial vacancies and the ever-present collegium and versus government question. You've pointed out the big problem with the district court vacancies. Of course, the data very clearly shows that there are huge vacancies in the high courts, in the district courts. But uh since you were a member of the collegium in the last few months. Has any step been taken? What is your review really of the system as it works as of right now?
No, the collegium is only for the high court.
The high for the high court, for the district, for the supreme court. And then the appointment system, of course, district courts work because there are exams that are carried out, then uh the appointments are made. But all the time, pretty much every year, we see every time there's a state exam for appointments. After that, there is a series of litigations coming all the way to the supreme court. That exam was not conducted properly or marking was not done properly or there is some problem somewhere. So I, if I may ask you to do an analysis of the system itself as it functions.
No, system is well, system is well.
So where are the blocks then?
The, the problem is only one, that uh we are not determining the vacancies year wise and making selections year wise. Like in UPSC, let us say I C F examination, in its results. It is functioning well. Every year, the examinations are taking place. There is no default. But why it is not functioning? When I was in my state, we were holding examinations and we conducted three, four examinations one after the other. But you see, litigation sometimes differed. But what is this root cause goes on before the courts? It has to be taken care of by the supreme court. So that there will be some broad guidelines to all the states. So that in district courts, appointment should be made exponentially.
Is there any work being done on this, in this regard? Because this is not a new problem.
The chief justice uh might be taking note of any individual capacity with the. Discussion with the respective chief justices. But in our collegium, these are not the matter to be discussed.
So coming back then to the matters that are discussed in your collegium, the collegiums that you've been a part of. Both in the high court and in the supreme court. We've seen a lot of long clashes between the government and the judiciary regarding appointments. We've seen it play out in the public domain, we've seen it play out behind closed doors. Is there any solution, is there any resolution? What is being done and what according to you should be done? So that every single time there are vacancies in the supreme court or the high court, that there's a lot of speculation. So and so will come, may not come, these may be the parameters, these may be the behind the scenes dialogues. What can, what does one, the judiciary do in this regard?
I'm not going back to what are the impressions people take about the functioning. Thing is, collegium is expert body, they know in and out of the system. They collectively work together under the edges of a chief justice. I do agree that matters are coming to us from different corners about why this selection, why not that selection? But if you see, let us say those who are select, those who are finally recommended. And those who are not recommended. Let us say, can anybody give me a distinction? That what is, what is that a quality in a person who is not recommended? Or what is, what is the thing which is not to be considered for a person who is recommended? Almost the same. The only thing is those who are not recommended, they think that we are better than those who are recommended. And you can't say for thing because as if there's a competition, there is no competition. We all come as judges in the respective one courts. And here I tell you one thing very clearly. In collegium, we keep broad based. The seniority of a judge. How many judges are representing in this court? How many persons are to be considered? We create a zone. Let us take five.
That zone of consideration that.
Five, five persons are to be considered, let us take eight, let us take nine. Either under, uh state not represented. Meritorious, potential, seniority in the zone state, seniority is overall seniority. And all things are being taken care of and then all the five judges sit together, discuss on all issues. And then you find out that these are the persons who can be considered.
So then what happens when the, the government doesn't accept it or sends it back or sits on a file for a long time? Because this is an issue that has been a question in the public domain for years now.
This is for the government to come out as what is the government's grievance. But I always say one thing, after coming into collegium and my experience shows. And I'll do this issue also once and let a meeting take place. There's something to say to the judiciary. We also have something to say. Why can't there be a committee of five collegium judges plus two nominated judges by the chief justice? Let there be on the prime minister and his colleagues, seven, six, whatever they think, and let there be a meeting.
To hash out appointments or other issues?
Not hash out, one. To discuss in overall spectrum. Because everybody wants the system to work smoothly in the interest of the people. And to do justice with the common man, which everybody demands from the court. So if there is something required more, it required a correction. Nothing wrong in it, you are always open for correction. So if we sit together, have a dialogue, what are, what we are expecting from the government, we'll say. Not expecting otherwise, in the interest of the people, what we say. Let the government may also come out, what they want from us. And whatever, the ultimate decision will come, will be in the interest of the people.
Has any such meeting actually happened? Because of course, the chief justice and the law minister do hold meetings. Uh the uh prime, at the prime minister and law minister level, of course, there are meetings. Has there ever been even an attempt at this kind of a broad-based discussion that, you know, let's put X Y Z agenda points to the government?
I don't, I never come across, I've never come across at meetings. To my understanding, meeting if six months, one meeting in six months takes place. It will be healthy for the institutions, all the institutions, not our judicial institution. The executive institution also, political executive also, we have, we know about it, what is happening on the ground.
But wouldn't that sort of blur the lines of separation of powers if you're uh.
No, 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 separation of power is different. Yes, size of power within our jurisdiction, this has nothing to do with the size of power. This is only a dialogue between the two, the political executive and the judiciary.
You did give this the, the suggestion.
My suggestion was that it is possible.
How was it, uh what was the response from your brother judge?
Think that's come. I feel that the chief justice will not take some, some call and do something better.
Uh since, since we are on the topic of appointments etcetera. And I will take it into a slightly tangential direction now. The question of who gets appointed, since you were talking about a broad-based view. We've been having this discussion in the public, in the judiciary as well for a long time about. Representation of various classes, categories in the judiciary. The chief justice very recently at the constitution day function also, the president also raised this issue of. Women coming into the legal profession, women in the judiciary, persons from backward classes in the profession and in the, in the judiciary. In the forty years that you've been a part of the system, have you, do you think more should be done or what is being done today that? And what additionally can be done to ensure that these classes and categories come within the system?
See, there is no, in high court or this court, there is no reservation.
I'm not of a reservation.
But we always keep it in mind. Let us give a proper representation and if we are able to find out any judge or a lawyer, we always consider. And the collegium always keep in mind, if a woman lawyer is there, we always consider. If a resolution is from reserve category there, if it's upcoming, we always consider. And despite the fact no reservation still, these broad-based considerations are always kept in mind. And that's why you will find in all recommendations, all kind of category, people from categories are coming forward. And that is the reason. That is called the, the way the system works.
If we can step out of just the supreme court collegium, as a systemic issue, how do you see this? Particularly, I very recently spoke to a former woman judge who was. Who has also spoke, said this on, in a public fora also. That there are a lot of issues that keep women and persons from say poorer families or. The, you know, like what we see as oppressed classes away from this profession. Because of the demands of the profession itself. We, the, and I'm, I'm asking you this as a systemic thing. What can be done to encourage more participation?
See, you're talking about high court.
I'm talking about the entire profession as a pyramid.
If you go at the district courts, uh we have a reservation. And persons from our works of life are being considered. And being this a public employment. So for all kind of O B C, S C, S D, women. Uh economically, workers' action society, all reservations are there, people are coming now. And if I'm not wrong in my statistics, when we make selections in the high court, in the district courts. The reservation is thirty percent, women reservation. But the representation was almost fifty five percent. So as on today, if you see, the women representation goes exceeding fifty five percent. Representation, reservation is thirty percent and representation is fifty five percent.
But uh and I beg your pardon if I'm repeating the same question. Very recently, we had a case in the supreme court itself where a representative from a particular district had to come and say that we. How do you expect us to work when there is no basic facilities such as toilets are not even there for women? And this is not, I mean, this is of course, this was a very extreme example in a small space, but. Even in the supreme court, it is only very recently that, you know, the, the differently abled toilets and uh etcetera have been created. Do you believe that things are changing and therefore we'll see a change in the next ten years or should there have been more done already?
Something has been done, but still more to be done. And government is also particular about it. You see, they have the S O P with the government issue for construction. They say all these toilets for this differently abled persons or women for this should be provided first. And there is S O P with the government. And wherever the courts are, new courts are open, in the infrastructure, they provide. Court room, the library, the sitting place for women, their toilets, everything is being taken care of. And if the infrastructure is not there, government is to, it is for the government to provide, state governments.
Speaking of infrastructure and accessibility, there is also this whole demand with regard to language of the courts. How do you see this debate exactly? Because there is a push that, you know, to use local languages even in the high courts and in. Allow, even in the supreme court now, of course, we've got judgments being translated. How do you see this entire?
This is a healthy sign. You see, we are, we are working with the people. We are working for a common man or a common litigant. Who doesn't understand English? And who can be more conversant in your language? So this particular procedure which has been followed by this court, in states it is being followed. If you go back to the state where Hindi is the uh language. Like U P, Madhya Pradesh, Rajasthan, Bihar, all proceedings are in Hindi, people understand. If you go to like Karnataka, Tamil Nadu, they have their own language, people understand that. But it was only in this court that English was the only language which is there. Now after the justice has taken a call and put in nine languages when I'm like, every judgment. I think people can understand what the judgment against. Otherwise, what will happening was, you heard, they will taking their judgment to somebody else. That please go through judgment and tell me what is the judgment in my favor or not. Now you can understand.
What about the court procedure? Because you, you started out at the Rajasthan High Court, then you went to Kshubha and then you've come back to Delhi to the Supreme Court. If, if there's a demand for litigation and procedure, court procedure in local languages, do you think that is something that can be done?
Uh seniors are in local language, like in Rajasthan, then he'll be.
So then the judges from various states have to learn the local language very quickly.
Yes, and it must be. Because I tell you, we are working for the people, we are not working for ourselves. If you have to learn, please learn, nothing wrong in it. But if you can't learn the language, you can't serve the people. So better for us to learn.
So uh when we're talking about, you know, strengthening the system and I'm again uh changing the. Topic of discussion so to speak. You were part of the bench that has talked about strengthening the election commission. You were part of this bench had also raised concerns regarding appointments to the election commission. And of course, there is this entire issue that we've had of institutions being used politically. Uh what's your take on this, on, on this line of? That, you know, no, nobody seems to be working in the way they are supposed to be working, subkuch political. How do you see this? Because that's the public perception.
You're right, public perception is same as yours expressed. When this night of election commission came to us. The question was article twenty four. Only say up our appointment. Mechanism of appointment was not the best idea. Earlier, the procedure was different. And we, and we all learned by experience. In this present democratic system. This situation has to be strengthened. Not, it is not, it is already strengthened. But to have confidence of the people, who is sitting on the air of years is more important. So we thought that there should be a broad-based system. And different brains with their experience it together. And take a call that who is the best amongst eligible persons who can man this particular institution. So that's why we intervene. And we said, let the prime minister, the teachers of India and the leader opposition make, constitute a committee and make a recommendation. So that is a broad-based, transparent system. And uh lent the system to go ahead, subject with the rider, and there was no legislation. He said it is interagdom period till the legislation is string. If the government in its wisdom later think that no, for appointment of a chief election commissioner, there should be a procedure. You can always, that is always welcome, government can come out with a legislation. And the judgment will reduce effect after the legislation comes in.
So um if I may ask another question, your personal comment, not as a supreme court judge, but as a officer of the court so to speak. The two big legal debates in the country today, the sedition law and the uniform civil court. How do you see these two? I mean, where are we going as a country when it comes to this, these issues?
You see, if you go to sedition bus. If I go back to the time. After this sedition law was introduced, one twenty four A in the court. The first case which came up to the court was almost after twenty years. And if I rightly regret, eighteen ninety one, the first case after twenty years of its introduction. This court undoubtedly has tested this provision in sixteen, nineteen sixty two, I think Kidar Nath's case. And sadly, this is a valid exception. But as we have traveled further. Right to free speech and expression is one thing which is being tested under article nineteen twelve exception. People are much aware of their rights. People make, have a right to comment. Barely any comment made against the government that can't be a ground for sedition. But the experience shows. At somewhere in, added data, I was examining different, the last year. Almost eight hundred complaints were there. And more than thirteen thousand people were implicated. I'm not going into merits whether it was justified, not justified. That is valid complaint or a complaint just need to get that man entangled into this needle framework. But the question rose that there is something required to be intervened. Like I always say that laws are made for the people, people are not made for law. So you have to make such laws which are compatible to the people's expectation, which works for them on the ground. That's why when the constitution validity is challenged, this court by interim order suspended it. So all proceedings pending in respective courts have been kept in surveillance. So what I want to suggest is, apart from merits or demerits of it. It's a high time for the government to reconsider. And to see as to whether this provision as it exists today is working for the well for the people. Or it is being misused or it runs a clarification so that. The concerned authorities may not misuse this provision for salty motives.
The law commission of course has suggested keeping this provision on the books because of the various issues involved. It with certain riders, with certain safeguards. Do you think the public perception of this being misused for political gain is going to be addressed if such changes are made? Or is it, is what the supreme court did in putting it in a way in a better uh?
Uh I don't prescribe this new, whether political gains are political, losing. Yeah, the different platforms. I am examining only on the judicial side and it's a little background. Commission might have said something which is always open for the executive to discuss and find out the way. But my experience shows, and I'll again repeat myself. That it is the time for the government to revisit, reconsider. And make it either clarify. And see that, and lay down certain standards so that anyone who is onto, you know, this free uh expression. His speech, his feature expression must know what are the guidelines and what are my parameters which I should not exceed. So the government come out with any modified legislation. My, my view is that will be in the interest of the people at large.
What about the other controversy, the uniform civil court? This is something that has come before the supreme court multiple times, you know. And considering the sheer complexity involved on the issue, whether it's marriage, divorce, family, inheritance, anything. How do you see this entire debate to see?
This uniform civil court, article forty four is there. What we left for the states. What uniform civil court says. It should be one law for marriage, for divorce, for inheritance, for succession, for adoption. These are all concerned with the day-to-day family problems, have the need and requirement. And once article forty four also gives you this discretion to be exercised. I think Goa has introduced this uniform civil court.
But Goa has had it since the Portuguese time, but that has also been criticized fairly.
So my view is that as on today is a very debatable question. And since matters are pending in poor parts and either nor I think in ninety six, this court has examined this. Uniform civil court. But they said we find reluctant to interfere.
Jee.
There may be some problems at the state level. So according to me also, it's a debatable question. And I leave it for the lawmakers to consider examine as to whether this will serve the, call the people at large.
What is your view of it?
I think I leave it for the lawmakers to first make a law. And let it be tested on the judicial fora. What was the outcome is acceptable to me also.
Okay, so, so um as a judge, as a senior lawyer, what are the kind of? You know, what would you say was a big influence to, for you as a judge? Something that you learnt as a young lawyer or as a young person that influenced you as a judge? And that you would like to pass on to the next generation of upcoming lawyers?
My message to the young lawyers is only one. Do hard work. And be committed to the cause of justice. And honesty yourself. Don't claim honesty, but be honest to yourself. And with my experience, I can tell you. If a lawyer follow these principles, sky is the limit of his profession. And shining is bound to come, professional shining is bound to come, maybe soon or later. But what is happening is we become so impatient. We want everything overnight. That is a trouble which is as on today in profession going on. I always say in my experience, please wait for some time, do hard work and there is no shortcut. No shortcut.
No shortcut to hard work. And if I may however, ask you one more question, what you said about claiming to be honest versus actually being honest. Very recently also made a comment at a public forum about claiming to be. Anti-establishment and versus being anti-establishment. And that brings us back to this entire question of the clash between the judiciary, the. the clash between the judiciary, the executive and what the executive has been saying about the conduct of former judges. Do you believe that, and since you said this, merely criticizing the government doesn't mean you're anti-establishment? What is anti-establishment for you? And how important, I mean, particularly in today's world, how important is it to be anti-establishment and for something that you believe in?
You see, for a judges, to say them anti-establishment or pro-establishment, I don't think this is nice and good. Judges are not concerned as to whether the matter goes on the right side or the left side. Judges are supposed to be concerned about the matter before them to examine. Test on the basis of the principles of law laid down and decided. But the people's perception is that, oh, this man is will decide against the government, he has certain reasons for. The other judge will decide in favor of the government, he has found his own reasons. But my request is, as a judge, we should not, people are making these statements. But as, as I'm concerned, I don't say that I'm a anti-establishment judge or a pro-establishment judge. I think after rendering nineteen years as a judge, I don't persuade myself whether I should claim myself to anti or a pro.
Because after nineteen years on the bench, you're part of the establishment.
Yes, no, 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 it's not establishment, judiciary is not establishment.
Okay.
Judiciary is only a body constructed for dispensation of justice. And we work for the people. So we can't claim, yes. When we were the lawyers, people say that he is a pro tennis, he is a pro landlord. But as a lawyer, you can say, he's a back of mine. I, I told earlier, one eyes, I said also, take one specially petition, one petition, and place it before five courts, five different courts. You will find the same matter examined by five different courts of different orders. Why so? Law has not changed. Whatever the law on the subject laid down by this court is available to all the five benches, but the orders are different, why? Here, the reason is, we all have our own viewpoint. We have been brought up in different atmosphere, we have seen different ground realities. We know where, what is the problem with the common man faces, different, in different way. So I pass my orders accordingly. We are not disturbing the law, no, we are interpreting the law in a manner we serve the people. Still the orders are different. If listed before me, I may suppose dismiss the petition. It goes to my brother judge in different bench, the same as L P. He say, oh, it's a fit case for Danta, admission and stay also. The other they say, alright, you notice in the matter and call upon.
So it effectively depends on a lot of how every judge looks at issues at a personal level.
Correct.
But when it comes to criticism of the government, especially since the government is very anti-criticism by ex-judges, how do you see that entire issue?
My request is very clear. We all get full opportunity to serve, make corrections with our experience. My viewpoint is, as long as you are in office, whatever the course corrections are possible, which you find and you come across, please do it. But criticizing the system after you are demitting office is not healthy for the institutions. And I like, I demit office, now my view is, leave it to my brother judges who are in office to take a call and whatever the course corrections, they feel in their own, in the interest of the institution, interest of the people, let them do it.
So that actually brings me to my concluding question really. You said, as you just said, that now that you're demitting office, you would leave it to your brothers and sisters on the bench to do the course correction. What next for Ajay Rastogi, the man now that he is no longer Ajay Rastogi, the judge?
Uh, that question is very difficult for me to answer at the moment. I thought that I worked for a long period and I had no time for my family as a lawyer also. And as a judge also, now I'll spend time with my family, do arbitration to keep myself busy and enjoy with my grandchildren and golf is my passion. So let me continue golf.
So golfing and grandchildren, that's next.
That is next.
I feel used to having you around in the house, I mean, other grandchildren used to, you know, grandpa being at home and, you know, ready to play with them.
Yes, my grandchildren now, they are good to play with me. They have gone to their nanny's place today, they enjoy.
So that is going to be the next few days of relaxation, golfing, grandchildren and then the next step for you would be?
Arbitration is, I'll keep myself busy. And one thing more I like to do, I'll do all social service, which I could not have done while in office. And I keep it open, whatever the legal assistance is required. Whatever I know with my short experience, I always want to share and give my best services to people.
So would we see you at any sort of a public, maybe a think tank or teaching somewhere? Or what do you count as social service?
There are so many social services in our, like either you go to some NGOs, there are good NGOs which are government-approved and like blood bank. I am very concerned about this donation.
Donation of time or donation of money?
No, not donation, donation of money is something very personal. I'm organ donation, body organ donations. I want to explore this, I have seen some of my friends who I know, they need some kind of a transplant and they're not getting it on a door. They're spending lot of money, they're not getting it. So I asked my doctor, I said I want to explore it and this donation camps, body donation camps, must be explored, media must explore. Give this facility to all and let all get themselves registered. So if our body or organs can be donated at a given point of time to the people who need it, that will be a good social service to the society.
So you, um, I'm sorry, if I may ask you to elaborate, would you be working on this side of sort of publicizing this or would you be working in sort of streamlining the rules that are required for all of this? Because of course, it's a very noble issue that you're bringing up, but organ donation, so is very limited as long as a person is alive.
Yes, I talked to certain doctors also, I was in Hyderabad. They told me sir, people are not coming forward, they have some kind of a hitch, they don't know, parents are also not giving consent, otherwise they need it, but in the south, it is prevalent. They told me in north, this is not that prevalent, people are not coming forward, Noto is there, and names. So I asked that doctor also that, if you can use my services for this better cause and let us come forward with, through the, through media, the people, that let come forward and each one should be registered for their organ donation. It will be a better cause and we tend to, for a common man and the person who is in need of his donation, can be helped by us.
That's a very noble task you've taken up sir and I wish you all the best in every endeavor for your future. We're speaking to Justice Ajay Rastogi who has recently demitted office at the Supreme Court. And now it seems that Justice Rastogi is going to be taking up social causes, causes of the people, particularly in line of organ donation and need and working for people who can't medically advocate for themselves. This is Anisha Mathur in New Delhi for India Today.